We're going to call the meeting into order. Please stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, can I get roll call, please?
Sure. Carmelo Oquendo?
Present.
Philip Lantry?
Present.
Russell Alexander?
Present.
Nanette Douglas?
Present.
Dawn Grisby? Absent. Dawn Streeter? Absent. Dacey Snyder?
Present.
Thank you.
Jim, we have a quorum. Ms. Snyder is a voting member this evening. Full commission. Thank you very much. Anybody's looked at the minutes from the last meeting? Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting, the meeting minutes from the last meeting?
I have a second.
I second.
I have first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All pass. We're going to start with the First Order of Business, which is ordinance number 2024-49. It's code ZMA 34240006.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. The case being presented to you today is for zoning map amendment for the project known as Clark Property. The property is made up of 10.31 acres of land. It is located south of Fertick Road, east of Michigan App. The applicant is requesting approval of ordinance 202449, as well as staff recommends approval. Some background on this location, that existing zoning is agricultural. The proposed zoning is R1B, single-family. The development is capable with the surrounding area and no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here are graphic representations of the future land use and zoning maps depicting the low-density residential future land use and existing agricultural zoning district, for context. Honored before July 25th, staff reviewed this project and recommends approval. Likewise, as requested, the Planning Commission also recommends approval of ordinance number 202449 for the zoning map amendment known as Clark Property. At this time, staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or the client to come up?
Good evening. Jesse Anderson, 2602 East Livingston, Florida, Orlando, Florida, that is. I am from Pulis and Bennett, and I'm the representative for the applicant tonight. I can answer any questions. We didn't prepare a presentation because this is well-done by staff. We agree with their recommendation, and we seek to keep going with the approval process.
Does anybody have any questions? One more, he's up there.
I have a question, just for my reference. You mentioned a corridor, proposed corridor, Toll Road, Collector roadway. Which would, what would that be?
The Collector roadway is actually the status of the roadway that there is in place for what we're butting towards. So there are different variations. There's arterial roadways, collector roadways, and local roadways. This is established as a collector roadway by the city. It won't need any taxes or anything like that, per this amendment.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Can we review the map again?
So this general property is in vicinity of a mixed-use development that you can see. That's that shaded pink area that's to the left of your screens. That's the Rowan Bridge mixed-use undergoing reviews currently. The site also abuts a mix, sorry, a small school site, as well as another school site that's adjacent to it down the road. So it is in vicinity for walkability for potential student generation that's going to come from it, has the potential future commercial that's going to really generate some more density in this area, and we're trying to accomplish that, but still continue that single-family feel.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this moment, we will open for public comments. Can I get Mr. Sam? Please?
Thank you. My name is Sam Doos. I live at Michigan Estates. It's the subdivision just north of there. And I had just come, the only comment I had was that I think the existing zoning allows for development more than what it is right now. And I know that there are reasons that staff would support this, but I think a more broader focus in what's going on in this area, it also, that Collector roadway that they're referencing also serves for the high school, the middle school, the elementary school. There's not just my neighborhood and subdivision, there's another subdivision just on the west side of Michigan. And then there's a large mixed-use development that is not even 100% completed in construction yet. So if anybody's driven down Michigan at any point in the morning or the afternoon, you know, there's a two-hour window in the morning and a two-hour window in the afternoon that can be, you know, quite cumbersome from a traffic perspective. So there's times where we have a hard time even getting out of our neighborhood because folks will get tired of the line, and then they'll just pull off and park on our neighborhood, and they kind of wait for their kids or kind of stage there. So the area, traffic-wise, is really already overburdened, and I don't think that's, anybody could really challenge that. You can really, it does not pass the eye test. But when you're out there, we have that other development that we haven't even begun to feel the effects of. I don't think it's even reached 25% of its full capacity yet, as far as that development itself. So if you look at the map, you can see the adjoining properties and how they're split lots. And I think the intent with this rezoning is to go something even more dense than what is there adjacent. So I'm just asking for you guys to really take that into consideration in this area. It's very, very, very busy. It's very overcrowded right now, and it is just a two-lane road. While that is a collector, it's classified as a collector, it is still just a two-lane road. So please take that into account as you consider this project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, if you would just restate your address. I know you stated your name. Would you state your address for the record?
My address for the record, I am at 531 Michigan Estate Circle.
St. Cloud?
In St. Cloud, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Do we have any other public comments? Well, at this time, we will close public comments. Any comments amongst ourselves? Yes, go ahead.
Good evening again. So Jesse Anderson from Pulis and Bennett. While I do appreciate the eye tests, we do have specific tests that do go along with this type of review and application process. First and foremost, we are not changing the overarching density of the project that is governed by the future land use of the property, which is retaining itself as low-density residential. It does allow up to a certain dwelling units per acre. If I'm not mistaken, that still continues at this time before dwelling units per acre. So this will not bridge over that whatsoever. We are maintaining that. On top of that, any AM or PM peak travel time periods will be assessed during the subdivision construction plan process if this were to be approved, and it cannot go over any level of service, again, during that time period, which it should not because of the fact that it is underneath the future land use that does establish that established level of service. And then finally, there will be required concurrency and associated impact fees that will be paid to mitigate any off-site issues that could arise from this, such as potentially expanding the roadway, if that were to be something that would come from this. But that would not be something that would come from this specific project alone. So that's just some of the things that you can think about in terms of what mitigation tactics there would be, as well as the fact that there are specific tests that we do have along the way to mitigate traffic. Thank you.
Is there any, just not to this, to hear, to this motion, but is there any opportunity or any comment of expanding Michigan, have you any time?
So during the traffic impact analysis, if this were to be approved, there would be mitigation that would be required from the site. Any mitigation that would be required during that traffic impact analysis that would be reviewed by staff, they would determine what mitigation we would need to have for that right-of-way, and we would comply with that. So if they did, for instance, require that, we would comply with it.
Okay. Thank you.
I think unfortunately, this is in one of those areas where we've seen over and over again residents really concerned about the traffic.
It is.
And that's the biggest issue. And it's nothing you've done wrong or anything wrong with the zoning. I mean, everything, you know, all the boxes are checked except the one where, you know, a lot of residents in this area have concern about traffic. And I think that's the biggest issue that we have.
Absolutely understand that. For traffic specifically, regards to both your comprehensive plan and statute, where there is concurrency in language that allows for us to proceed through this type of process permitted that, or provided that we are satisfying that level of service that is stipulated by your comprehensive plan and maintaining the level of service for that given roadway. So at any point in time, if we do not adhere to that level of service, we cannot receive certificate of occupancy, which means we cannot actually have units built on those properties and then filled with people if we do not meet the actual level of service that's guiding by your comprehensive plan. So there are baselines in place to make sure we do not break that.
Yes, and I understand that. I just, you know, for me, it's, the problem is this area until Michigan gets expanded or gets a few extra lanes on it, it's just, it's going to be a huge problem in the future.
Totally get that.
And it's, it's just an area that's already super congested.
Totally get that.
And there's still so many agricultural properties out there that haven't been converted all the way down, all the way. So all that depends on what people are doing with their properties.
And the development that we're putting forward gives the impact fees that pay for that type of expansion in the roadway. So unless you would like for the city to be expending its own revenue, the way for it to be paid for is through development and the impact fees that are associated with it that, again, go back to that level of service that, you know, you got to set those fees to make sure we maintain that. So that's, again, staff has gone through extensive research on their impact fees and concurrency to make sure that these standards are in place. They update them every few years. And so, you know, in the past, there have been sure issues. I actually used to work for St. Cloud, so I do know there were some in the past. But I know that staff is also geared up and pressed forward with a path forward that is substantially toward unifying the city, towards a better goal, and that's coming with a new comprehensive plan eventually, which if you look at the proposed map for that, this is in coalescence with what they're looking for, for the future land use again.
How many units can you fit on this area?
So in total, the...
I know based on the numbers, I mean, probably 40, but I don't think it's actually that many.
No, it's not going to be 40 by any means. There's a specific amount of open space. If I'm not mistaken, it's about 20% for this area. It's either 15 or 20%, but I think it's 20%. So right there, you're knocking 20% of the site off. Then you have to take into account actually providing retention, which is about 17 to 18% of the area, as well as some roadway interconnectivity. Some of the stormwater will count for open space, but there is a portion of it that won't. So basically, there's going to be stormwater, open space, and right-of-way that are going to be taken out of this project before you see the lots come to play. And then the amount of actual lots that come out of that is just the linear amount of feet on that roadway. So there's not projected to be too many. I do have one of my engineers here that could potentially answer how many lots on our most recent concept plan, but realistically, we do see that this is going to be much lower than 40. We don't know exactly how many until we get through further phases and more extensive engineering, but at this point, it's not going to hit the maximum.
So would you potentially have connectors into Delaware and Michigan Avenue and the existing neighborhood that's to the north?
We are working out our circulation patterns, so that's...
I guess it would be Fertick Road would be to the north.
Correct. So Fertick's directly to the north, and then there is a subdivision that is adjacent to it that we are trying to line up with for ease of transportation and so forth, just transportation circulation and so forth. But we are also looking to work with the city throughout the preliminary subdivision plan and subdivision construction plan processes to make sure we're making the alignments and the improvements that they're seeking to better, or to further their overall transportation plan. And we do know this is a very intensive corridor, so we want to maintain and make sure that we are keeping a watchful eye on any impacts we have for it.
Okay.
Any other questions for?
What's the anticipated timeline to start construction?
So I, it depends on how long it takes us to go through the entire process. I'd say roughly 12 to 15 months is more of a hopeful timeline. But again, we have the preliminary subdivision process, then after that, it'd be construction plan, then following that final plat. And as of now, I do not believe there's a concurrent review process, so you're seeing those sequentially, and a couple more will come back in front of the City Council, for instance.
Questions? I got a question for city staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
Is Fertick Road there now from Michigan to Old Hickory Tree?
I believe so, yes.
It's not totally done, right?
Mr. Alexander, can you, Mr. Alexander, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Fertick Road, is it done from Michigan to Old Hickory Tree?
From what, from what we understand, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development, from what I recall, it's not improved yet.
Okay.
That portion of Fertick.
But it is in the works, right?
Well, if this zoning map amendment is approved and they move forward to their subdivision construction plan, any adjacent right-of-way will have to be approved to city standards. So that would include Fertick, Delaware, and Michigan, the portions that are contiguous to their property.
And is there still a plan in place for, I believe Orange Avenue is going to connect to Hickory Grove in that same area?
Orange Avenue is supposed to eventually connect south to Nolte and north to 19th Street, if I'm recalling correctly.
So would this subdivision have access to Fertick over to Orange?
I don't believe so, because there's an agreement in the works with the Ferticks where they have asked the city to not improve that area of Fertick. And I don't know the details on that. I don't know if Dave Tomac is here and available, but he's currently working with the Ferticks on improving Orange Avenue in lieu of Fertick Road for the portion that is adjacent to their property.
And does Sky Lakes connect to Michigan?
I believe so. Sky Lakes.
It's hard to see on this map. It doesn't look like it does.
No, it actually does not look like it. It's hard to tell on the map if Sky Lakes does or not. But I believe it does.
Okay.
Any other questions? If everything's good, thank you. Any other comments? We'll disclose everything, and I ask from, if anybody has a motion? Yes, ma'am?
I'm so sorry, and I forgot to mention just the point of clarification. Even though the land use is not changing and they can currently build up to four dwelling units per acre, the current zoning only allows one acre lots. So if you change the zoning, you're reducing the lot size to a 65-foot width, so I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Thank you. With all the clarifications and everything said, anybody have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-49, based on the 16 findings within the Land Development Code.
I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Aye. Two, three.
Who voted, who voted in favor of the motion by hands? So vote of three to two in favor of approval, recommending approval, three to two, passes.
Thank you very much. Now we'll be listening to ordinance number 2024-51, CDA 24-00005.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Tisha Manning, zoning manager for Community Development. The project before you is the amendment to the Land Development Code for mini warehouse and storage facilities. Currently, that is under our Chapter 3 Performance and Siding Standards, Article 14, Use Regulations, and this is Section 3.14.23. So in that section is, currently, right now, the section is A through K, so we are proposing to reorganize what is currently there as some additional language. And so this slide kind of breaks down how it's going to break out with the new language that we're adding. So Sections A through C is going to be uses, permissible and prohibited uses. Section D is going to be the height standards. E is maximum size of units. F is going to talk about the visibility of rolled-up doors from the public right-of-way. Prohibited uses of storage materials is G through M. And then what's really going to be the bulk of the entire section that we're rewriting and amending is going to be the design of the building facades, which is going to be H through K. So in these slides, I've outlined in those sections, the sections that we're adding. I didn't really take into consideration the things that were already existing in the ordinance, in the Land Development Code as it stands. So what we're adding to Section A is going to be a secondary and a primary use, and that's going to allow, like, if they want to build a two-story building and then they want to have some type of commercial or something at the bottom, that they're able to do that. And we've done a little bit of research, and it's not anything that's existing right now in this area, but there are some storage facilities that have, like, restaurants at the bottoms that have drive-throughs. So we added some of that language to allow that, if that should come to fruition here. We've also added language about the accessory uses. We can tell that a lot of the storage facilities have accessory uses for the rental of trucks. So we've added that language that they can have two trucks available for rent on display in the parking areas that are visible from public right-of-way, but those spaces utilized cannot be the spaces that is required for their parking count. So when we go to Section B, it talks about the prohibited uses, and what we've added there is some things that's happening, you know, throughout the state, of people using mini warehouses as residential for residential purposes, so we've made sure to add that language, that it cannot be used for residential purposes, that they're not able to store any type of weapons, firearms, or ammo. They cannot store illegal substances, not limited to drugs, because people store all types of things, as well as drug paraphernalia. And they're not allowed to have any type of animals on property unless it's written consent by the facility owner. And the reason why we say written consent by the facility owner is if someone that goes in there with some type of impairment and they have an animal as their guide dog or things like that, we want them to be able to take that animal on property, but not be able to, you know, use the storage facility as like a boarding of animals and different things. So we've also added some height standards in the Mini Warehouse and Storage Facilities Land Development Code. We are now requiring that the minimum height is 24 feet, which is approximately about two stories. And then the maximum height is adjacent to residential, is 35 feet, and that's so that it doesn't go over the two-story of what a typical residential home may be. Section G, we added about curb cuts, because we want to make sure that we limit the amount of curb cuts that they can have coming into that facility to three for the entire parcel and two for any block face, just to make sure we have, you know, through access and they give other access points if they build these type of facilities. We've also added this section, this section was already in the code, but I did want to bring this out because we want to make sure warehouse doors are not the predominant feature of the building facade. And so what we've also added in Section H, to further elaborate on that, is that interior access to units shall not be visible from the street unless it's behind walls and windows. And that's with at least a three-foot behind the wall, behind the window, at least incest by three, indent it by three feet. So just to give a little bit more visual interest, sometimes you see the two stories, and you can see the doors behind them, but they do have the windows in there back. We've also added a lot of design elements when it comes to mini warehouses. And a lot of this code is something that we've already have in our non-residential architectural standards, but we want to bring it over into the mini warehouse section because we want to make sure that we only bring over what applies to the mini warehouses and that is very specific to the design of a mini warehouse or a storage facility. So some of the things that we are bringing over, and that's going to, is the same as it is in non-residential architectural standards, is the amount of design elements per square feet. So at 10,000 square feet or less, they have to have three design elements. 10,000 square feet, more than 10,000 square feet, but less than 50,000 requires four, and anything 50,000 square feet or more will require five design elements. And then if you look in the code, there's very specific design elements that they can use, things such as awnings, you know, block facade, so different things that they can use to accommodate those design elements. In J, we also, again, brought this over from the non-residential, and it just talks some more about how the actual facade of the buildings should look. It talks about building materials, the prevention of monotony. It talks about color palette, so that it's not anything that's not going to be in character with the area in which the mini facility, mini warehouse or storage facility is going. It talks about their appearance from right-of-ways, as well as any office or retail building space that they might also allow on that property. We've also included design elements as it pertains to lighting, to make sure that they have uplighting, to make sure that they have photometrics, provide us photometric plans, and they provide lighting throughout that facility itself, so that there's no, you know, dark skies, and we're making sure that the facility is safe for the people that are, you know, visiting that facility, as well as anyone that may just be surrounding it. We also do the elimination of any solid blank walls. So again, that's going to go back to those design elements where they have to add some type of banding. They have to use a certain type of material. They have to make it aesthetically pleasing and give some visual interest to the building. And we also talk about the transparency. So any of those building's facades that faces a public right-of-way has to have a maximum and a minimum number of transparency to look as if you can walk into the building, even if the building is not open, like if it's just even a fake facade, so that, you know, as cars are passing by, again, it's all about aesthetics. And then we also added this section specifically in outside storage, and it's that outside storage can only be located inside in rear yards and entirely screened from the view of adjacent non-industrial property and public right-of-ways. And it has to be screened by a six-foot masonry wall. So staff has reviewed this ordinance, and we do recommend approval of ordinance 2024-51, and likewise, we ask that the planning commission also recommend approval. This is a city project, so I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions. What's the reasoning for the minimum 24 feet? Is that, are you trying to encourage less of a footprint?
We're trying to, yes, we're trying to get them to actually increase the intensity and build up versus out, because out takes up more land use. They'll bring in some buildings, and then they want to have, you know, a majority of just outside storage. So it's taking up a lot of land space and creating sprawl, and so we're trying to come away from that.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then as far as the six-foot fence for, or concrete wall, could that be taller if they, I know typically in residential, it's six feet is the limit in the city, but I know that a lot of times those yards are used for storing things like boats and RVs, and I'm just questioning if six feet is, is high enough?
Well, we put it at six feet because, again, we, we're trying to anticipate what they may be storing, so maybe it's just cars, but you're correct. If they bring in RVs or boats, then that is definitely something we can look at as going as far as maybe eight feet. We don't want to go anything higher than that, because in our commercial, the highest is eight feet.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
Is there a maximum height? You got, you know, maximum for residential for thirty-five, but is there a maximum period? Could they build a ten-story storage facility?
And, and if they...
They're, they're maxed at thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet of residential area.
Well, then we would look at floor area ratio if they're building in commercial. We will look at the floor area ratio. The maximum is really so that for the maximum of the thirty-five feet is if they're building adjacent to residential. Even if their floor area ratio allows them to build more, we're giving them a maximum that they cannot, because we don't want towering storage facilities over residential.
But if it's not in a residential area, they can go to the sky?
No, then they would be governed by their floor area ratio and any other zoning issue.
Okay.
Is there already something existing that requires the... I know that you're allowing for two, say, U-Haul or whatever the brand may be trucks to be advertising in the front, but is there any requirement for the rest of those to be parked in the rear or on the side?
It is required, so it's not specifically written in the code, that's why we're adding it. They can have them now on the property. A lot of times they come with conditional uses before us. And so at the point of conditional uses, when we tell them they have to be parked in the rear or they have to be parked somewhere else. So by installing, by, you know, writing that into this code, it's just kind of real upfront and show them you can have two on display. So when they're developing, because remember, this is for new development, that they'll develop that area where they're going to store the remaining of those trucks.
Yeah, and I was only asking that because we had one conditional use that came before us and they were supposed to only park two trucks. And every time you drive by, you see, like, six, eight, ten trucks out front, so that's why I was asking.
I don't know which one. Any other questions? All satisfied? Thank you, ma'am. We'll open up for public comments if there's any. No public comments, we'll close public comments. Any other questions amongst yourselves? If not, may I get a motion, please?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-one based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Rest of the vote?
Aye.
Five, five zero approval, okay, thank you.
Thank you. So now we have three. Would you like me to read them completely and then we'll do them separately, correct? So it'll be ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-two, ANX twenty-three dash zero 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 five. And then ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three, CPA twenty-three dash zero 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 eight. And ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-four, ZMA twenty-three dash zero 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 nine.
Good evening, Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development. The case presented to you tonight is for annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment for a project known as LaSalle Avenue. The property is made up of point eighty-eight acres and is located at thirty, thirty-one fifty LaSalle Avenue. The applicant is requesting approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four fifty-two, twenty twenty-four fifty-three, and twenty twenty-four fifty-four. Staff also recommends approval. Background, this request meets both statutory requirements and is consistent with our joint planning agreement with Osceola County, as it's contiguous and reasonably compact. The existing county of future land use is low-density residential and existing county zoning is institutional. The subject parcel is located north of Cypress Avenue and west of LaSalle Avenue. As you can see, to the north and east is contiguous to the city boundaries. Background, the proposed flow is parking open space. The applicant is proposing a zoning of open space and recreation that is compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here are graphic representations of the future land use and zoning map depicting the county's low-density residential, land use, and institutional zoning district. Honored before July twenty-fifth, staff reviewed this project and recommends approval. Likewise, it's requested the planning commission also recommends approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four fifty-two, twenty twenty-four fifty-three, and twenty twenty-four fifty-four for the annexation, land use, and zoning map amendments for the project known as LaSalle Ave. At this time, staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Do you have any questions for staff?
What's going to be built there?
It will be a telecommunications tower.
Any other questions?
Does this, does there have to be an established need for something like that to be built? I'm just curious if, do you know?
Yes, yes, there has to be an established need, because a, the city's goal is to improve the infrastructure in the area, and that's how we will stick to the comprehensive plan.
Is it a communications tower for the city?
Yes. Wait, no, oh, I'm sorry.
I assume probably a cellphone tower or something.
Yeah, it's a cellphone tower.
Yeah.
Yes, currently, the applicant is proposing a cellphone tower in that area. And so it is supported by the open space and the, and park for the zoning, so.
So is there going to be a park there along with the tower? Or are we just calling it a park space because there's a tower on it?
That's just the zoning that a tower is able to go into that type of zone. It doesn't mean that they're going to have a park.
Ms. Manning, Ms. Manning, grab the mic.
Doesn't mean they're building a park, that's the zoning that they're requesting. And it allows for a communication tower.
Why does the property owner want to annex into the city?
Because they're contiguous and they, any type of development with our joint planning agreement requires that they annex into the city.
Remind me, don't we have, I, I seem to recall that we voted on some standards for towers? That there are certain requirements, I don't remember if it was height, but visually how they appear, right?
Yes, yes.
And we brought it on placement too, where they're going to be.
Yeah, height was part of it, visually how they appear. I can't remember the actual specifics of it, but it, it is a requirement, so how the tower has to look.
Right, right, okay.
Any other questions?
I mean, I don't have any issues with this, I think it sounds like theoretically, if they build this tower, it would improve service for people in that area. So I think that's important. I mean, obviously, I think that would have to go for another approval, right? If they actually were, decided they wanted to build the tower? Or, or would, would the, just simply the changing the zoning suffice?
No, they would have to go through a site development plan.
Right, right, okay. So I assume if anybody in that area was opposed to it, that would be their chance to, you know, voice their opposition.
City council.
Yeah.
Sorry, Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. This item will also go to city council with your recommendation, so that is also a public hearing where anyone can come out and, and give their, their comments.
Now, do they have to send, was there a notice sent out to residents within, I think it's five hundred feet of the area?
Yes, we did send out a notice of five hundred feet.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant available? Would you like to say anything?
Good evening, Mary Solick, one twenty-one South Orange Avenue, Suite fifteen hundred, Orlando, Florida. I'm counsel for the applicant. Your staff's already done a very thorough evaluation of the applications and answered a lot of your questions. Is there anything else I can add to the mix?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll sit down, I think there's a young lady back here that wants to say something to you, so I'll come back.
I will close it up for, and now we'll get public comments. When you're done, please fill out a small form and give it to the secretary, please. When you're done speaking, state your name and address, please, bring down the mic.
My name is Bonnie Dixon.
Ma'am, if you could just move the mic. Bring down the mic. There we go. There you go.
My name is Bonnie Dixon, and I live at three thousand LaSalle, and that's the very north end of LaSalle. I have twenty acres in the middle of everything, and there's only one road that comes in there and out of there. And they can build whatever they want to there, as long as it don't block my road. I built that road going in and out of there. As long as it don't block my road with me coming in and out, I don't care.
Would you like to address that?
Absolutely. Ms. Dixon, I am happy to report to you that unlike the first item on the agenda, we do not generate any traffic. We get one vehicle trip per month per carrier on the tower, once the tower is built. And the construction is very minimal, and we, we will not be blocking your access.
Well, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
Because there is only one way in and out of there, and that's it. So that's, that's good then. If there wasn't, Rooster's in big trouble. Tommy?
Yeah.
Ma'am, ma'am, do you have any further comments? Any other comments? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, any other public comments while we're here? Okay, we'll be closing for public comments. Any questions or comments amongst yourselves? I think it's a good idea. It's been far needed in that area. Okay, can I get a motion, please? We're going to, remember, Mr. Chairman, we're going to take these items one at a time. Can I get a motion for ordinance number twenty twenty-four, I mean, yeah, twenty twenty-four dash fifty-two, ANX twenty-three dash zero 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 five?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-two based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
I have the first motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, go ahead.
We got a first and a second, all in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Passes four one. Mr. Alexander voted against. Next one will be ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three, CPA twenty-three dash zero 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 eight. Will I have a motion, please?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
I have a first, we'll have a second. I will second it. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Passes four one, Mr. Alexander against. I had a time limit?
You ran out of time.
Next, we'll be hearing ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-four, ZMA twenty-three dash zero 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 nine. Can I get a motion, please?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-four based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Passes four one. Okay, next reading will be ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-five, CDA twenty-four dash zero 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 seven.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Tisha Manning, zoning manager for the city of St. Cloud. We are going to postpone this, reading of this LDC ordinance, twenty twenty-four dash fifty-five, to a date certain, and move this to the September Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Secretary, can you please tell me the date of the September Planning Commission?
I think it shows to be September seventeenth.
Yes, so it's going to be moved to the September seventeenth Planning Commission.
Thank you, ma'am. So at this time then, we'll be hearing ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-six, ZMA twenty-four dash zero 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 five.
Good evening, Ralph Keith, Associate Planner with Community Development. The case before you is for a zoning map amendment for a project known as Nova Road Subdivision. It is made up of thirty point thirty-eight acres, it is east of Shaker Palm Place and west of Nova Road. The applicant is requesting approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four fifty-six, and staff also recommends approval. The existing zoning designation is R-one single-family. The proposed zoning will be R-one B single-family dwelling. The development is compatible with the, with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on city facilities. Here's a graphic, graphic representation of the future land use and zoning maps depicting the low-density residential future land use in the existing R-one zoning district. Honored before July twenty-fifth, staff reviewed this project and recommends approval. Likewise, it's requested that the planning commission also recommends approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four fifty-six for the zoning map amendment known as Nova Road Subdivision. At this time, staff and, staff and the applicant are available for questions.
I have a question for the applicant. Is this just an extension of the Westerly that's there, or is it...
John Adams, RJ Whitten Associates, Eight Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, three four seven four one. Referring to the neighborhood to the west?
Yes.
It's a separate neighbor, separate neighborhood, separate development. However, it would be requesting the same exact zoning, similar. There isn't, because that existing development didn't create a stubout. We're still in the middle of planning our concept plans. I know Center Lake Ranch is a mixed-use district to the north that we will show connection to. Across the street, there is a high school being built that will open July twenty-sixth, and that'll have some bearing on where we can connect to Nova Road, but we are coordinating with the school board's design of the high school across the street as well.
Okay, but you would have a stubout to the north, to Center Lake Ranch?
Yes, to, to create that interconnectivity with the mixed-use district.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I think my question would probably be more for the city, just kind of with understanding. Are these both low-density categories?
The difference between R-one and R-one B?
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, yes, they are both low-density categories. By doing R-one B, it will allow for additional units.
Okay, but still, it would still count as low-density?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'll open up for public comments. No public comments? You do? Have you filled the form? After you've finished speaking, you can fill the form, give it to the secretary. State your name and address.
Hi.
Speak into the mic.
My name is Yvette Cruz. I live in five seven forty Shaker Palm Place, behind the, that's my patio. And my, my question is, that is, that's going to be a road connected or going to be houses, what? Because they explain exactly, this is my house, right here, and they just put this line, they don't say nothing about houses, it's only a road, a road connection.
Ma'am, if I could for the commission, they, they'll take your feedback, and I'm sure the respondent may want to respond to your question, but the commission's here to take your feedback, but they're not here to answer the questions for you. That might be something suitable for the applicant for you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Can, I'm sorry, can you just clarify your question?
Yes, it's going to be a road or it's going to be houses, what?
Well, can you show the applicant and maybe he'll have an answer for you?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, applicant's right there.
I can just, there, is any other public comment?
Any other public comment? Well, we got it open. We'll close public comments. Any comments amongst ourselves or questions?
Do you want me to address that?
Yes, you can.
Once again, John Adams, RJ Whitten Associates. Clarify, this is just a zoning application. After this, there will be a preliminary subdivision application... Uh, after this, there will be a preliminary subdivision application that does show all those details of what will be there. Uh, it'll likely be a house or water pond that abuts that, uh, adjacent neighborhood that's already existing there. But again, that's another application that will come in front of this board and city council.
Thank you very much.
Can we look at the map again? I just wanted to see something. Okay, I just, I wanted to clarify what home we were talking about. Because there was an existing home on the property, but that, that's part of the, the property that we're talking about, so I just wanted to check and make sure.
Any other questions amongst ourselves? If not, all public comments are closed. All comments are closed. May I have a motion, please?
I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash fifty-six based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
I have a first. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes five zero. Okay. Thank you, sir. Next thing we'll be listening to is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-four R, CNU twenty-four dash zero 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 one.
Good evening, Commissioner Stephanie Streeter, Associate Planner for Community Development. I do want to go on record and amend the agenda. It should be a resolution, not an ordinance. Uh, but tonight I'll be presenting CNU twenty-four dash zero 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 one, JJCC Assembly of God Church Conditional Use. It's on one point six nine acres of land located at fourteen oh six Eastern Avenue. The applicant is requesting approval of resolution twenty twenty-four one twenty-four R, and staff is recommending approval with conditions. So for background, it is residential two, R-two zoning, which is what requires it to be a conditional use. Places of worship is a use that has to be approved conditionally. The future land use is medium-density residential. They are proposing on the bottom parcel, a five thousand three hundred and ninety-five square foot building where their church will reside. They currently exist on the top parcel in the fifteen thousand square foot building, which is where they have their church and their educational facility. They will have Sunday services at nine and ten thirty, and Tuesday and Wednesday services at seven P.M. For some background, the church currently exists at three hundred and twenty-four seats. They're actually reducing their seats to two hundred and eighty-four. They did have their conditional use approved in twenty seventeen, which matched them at three hundred and twen- twenty-four seats and a hundred and twenty students. So that existing building will remain as their educational facility with the max at a hundred and twenty students, and they will be lowering their seats for the new five thousand square foot building. The classes will continue Monday through Fridays, eight fifty to two fifty. So these are the graphic depictions of the zoning in the future land use map. You can see to the north on the zoning, they do have commercial above them and to the east of them, and then they're surrounded by the residential two. I did provide you updated concept plans that were not provided in your staff report. The staff report was a little large, and it was harder to see where the five thousand square foot facility was located. So the applicant provided us an updated concept plan where you can see that five thousand square foot facility with the parking. They will continue to also utilize the parking on that fifteen thousand square foot side, um, if you're able to see that in your staff report. So they will have parking in both locations still because it coincides with the school. So staff is recommending approval of resolution twenty twenty-four one twenty-four R with the following conditions. The main auditorium of the expanded church shall not have more than two hundred and eighty-four seats. The existing school shall not have more than a hundred and twenty students. The approval of the requested conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan. Changes to the site will require approval of site development plan and any additional approvals required by the LDC. And for as long as the use permitted hereunder continues in the event that stacking or standing of vehicles encroaches into the public right-of-way or otherwise interferes with the flow of vehicular traffic as determined by the city, the resolution may be brought back before the city council for review and consideration of additional conditions to address traffic issues or possible revocation of the rights granted hereunder in perpetuity. So we are requesting approval of resolution one twenty-four with the conditions as stated by staff. Staff is available as well as the applicant for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the staff?
No, I don't have anything.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder to the commission, the, uh, the report, uh, the, the conditional use, the factors to be considered are on pages three through six of your report, the six factors that you consider and whether to give approval or to withhold such. So just pointing that out for you. It's on pages three through six of the report. Thank you. Per the land development code. Of St. Cloud. We have any questions for the city? Would the applicant like to speak while you're here?
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Bruce Taylor of B. Taylor and Associates, and I'm here to answer any further questions that you may have.
Thank you so much.
So the existing building is between, um, Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street?
That's correct.
And then, so the new facility would be between Fifteenth and Sixteenth, right?
Correct. It's just south of Fifteenth Street, fifty-three ninety-five. There's a, there's actually an existing parking lot there, which we're gonna remove some of the spaces. We're gonna keep some of the other spaces. That's how we came up with the, with the maximum seating of two eighty-four. So that's why we're actually reducing some of the seating in the new church.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Any questions for?
I have a question. Um, it says here under number two, I guess it's page four, that, um, the church is gonna encourage your participants to utilize alternative means of transportation.
That's correct. We, I, I believe a lot of the, um, the people that go to the church, uh, live around that area. So they're gonna be, they're gonna be able to be a pedestrian, walk to the church. That's from my understanding.
Thank you, sir.
More for like the neighborhood.
You should also add some bike racks, just in case.
I've got plenty of them on there. If you look, if you look at the new plan, I think I have about twenty on there.
Yeah, I think I, I see them in the top left corner now, yeah.
That's a very nice facility proposed.
Any worship place is good for me. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you.
I will open up for public comments, if any. No public comments? We're closed public comments. Any other questions amongst yourselves or to the staff? If I have no questions, may I get a motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one twenty-four R, based on the six factual matters within the land development code.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passes. Passes five zero. Yes, sir.
If I may, if I just want to confirm, we're including the conditions also as stated by staff.
Yeah, I was wondering that. Yeah, you didn't, you didn't include that in your motion, the conditions.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The conditions that were recommended by staff to, for the approval, does, does your motion include those conditions?
Uh, yes, I, so yes, including the conditions recommended by staff?
So I got a first, do I have a second? The conditions, okay? All in favor with the conditions?
Aye.
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 Passes with the conditions. Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Adam, Secretary, our next meeting, please. September seventeenth. If there's nothing else, can I get a motion to end the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.